Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2020 special meeting of the Lebanon City Council. I believe we have six of nine councilors either present or on the line this evening. I'm looking at Councilor Winnie, Councilor Sykes, Councilor Heist and Councilor Prentice online. Councilor Bronner is here with me. And I think we'll go ahead and get started because we have more than a quorum. Why don't we start with the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While we're waiting for other councilors to sign on, Sean, why don't you go ahead and head and give the statement in case it's going to be in the audience?
This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the order issued by the government of the state of Hampshire, ANRC 91A. The meeting is being conducted virtually and only by virtual means. It's not the physical presence of the council through the COVID-19 pandemic situation will be unsafe for them physically. All being in the same location in close proximity to each other and also be unsafe for the public to attend in that fashion. So therefore, the meeting is being conducted by virtual means.
If you have those participating by phone, if you wish to participate when the time is allowed for public comment by the mayor, you'll be recognized to do that and then you will just hit star six on your phone. That'll allow you to speak. Again, when the mayor decides that he's got a lot of public input, he'll make that determination at that time and you'll be allowed to speak. Thank you. See, Councilor Zook has signed in. Do I see Councilor Hill here anywhere? Not yet. Okay.
Yes, yes, Councilor.
Whoa, sorry?
This is Councilor Hill. I'm present on the phone.
Yeah, got you. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Hill. Okay, so we'll start with the public forum announcement as we always say at the beginning of every meeting. Any member of the public who deserves to speak on any item may do some of the items taken out by the council and be allowed to speak on the subject for not more than three minutes. We ask you to state your name, your ward of residence, if you live here in the city, and to hold your comments to three minutes. We also allow a little bit of time at the beginning of the meeting if someone has a topic that they want to speak to that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone who has a topic that's not on the agenda that they briefly want to address?
Remember, if you're a member of the public, if you're calling in by phone, it'll star six and that'll allow you to speak.
Okay, hearing none. We have several items of new business tonight. The primary reason for our meeting tonight is to go over our financial outlook and our first quarter 2020 budget reports. We do have a couple of items relating to businesses on the mall and our annual permits to serve alcoholic beverages. The first item, item 3A, is an amended request from Salt Hill Pub for an exemption per section 14-5 of the City Code, Chapter 14, alcoholic beverages to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages on city property. Sean, would you like to address this one?
Yes, as I spoke about before, we're allowing Salt Hill and also Three Tomatoes to expand the area that they will be serving food. As you know, as effective Monday, the 18th, the governor under 2.0 has allowed for restaurants to reopen under restricted conditions and restricted conditions only that requires outdoor seating and requires distances between tables, which requires a very large surface area to be able to effectively be able to serve people. So we are proposing the closure of Court Street, which allows Three Tomatoes, they're setting up a tent in that area. And if approved tonight, that will actually start tomorrow morning. First thing, they'll start the tents set up. And we'll also be putting decorative planters out there as traffic barricades. And that will remain effective until September 15th on the present plan. So that will close that street during that time and allow Salt, yeah, Three Tomatoes to serve their food out there. And Salt Hill is going to use the parking area right in front of the very building that we are sitting in here at the temporary city hall. They do the very same thing. They'll set up a tent in there that tables spaced apart to make sure they can do that safely. And that will allow them to serve alcohol in that particular space. So that requires council approval to do that. You already gave approval for their location on the mall. Now we have a slightly changed area for both Salt Hill and Three Tomatoes Mall, as well as Court Street for Three Tomatoes and Park Area right in front of the building.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to deal with the Salt Hill request first. Just checking to see if Councilor Beal has signed on yet. Yeah, I see him, I think. Yes, he does. Okay, so Councilor Beal.
I'm here and I'm going to recuse myself from these issues.
Okay, for both of them?
Yes, please.
Excellent. Would someone like to make a motion as per the amended request from Salt Hill? Yes, Councilor Bronner?
For the purpose of amending the April 1st, 2020 exemption to serve alcoholic beverages on city-owned property. Be it moved that the Lebanon City Council hereby grants an amended exception to Salt Hill Pub to serve alcoholic beverages within the bounds of their designated outdoor seating area, which has been expanded to include the parking area in front of Salt Hill and the 20 West Park Street building. The larger portion of the Lebanon pedestrian mall and the larger portion of the Lebanon pedestrian mall, as shown on the map included in the May 13th, 2020 City Council Agenda Packet. Be it further moved that the exemption to serve alcohol within the expanded seating area shall only be valid through the duration of the closure of the parking area in front of Salt Hill Pub and the 20 West Park Street building currently planned for May 13th, 2020 through September 15th, 2020. Should outdoor seating and the service of alcohol beverage be desired beyond September 15th, 2020, it will be restricted to the area designated within the pedestrian mall.
Thank you very much. Councilor Bronner makes the motion. Is there a second? Councilor Hill second. Councilor Hill seconds the motion. Thank you. Okay, we'll do a voice call on this. Councilor Winnie?
Councilor Winnie votes aye.
Councilor Sykes?
Councilor Sykes votes yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bronner? Yes. Councilor Heist? Councilor Heist?
Sorry, I forgot to mute. Heist votes yes.
Thank you very much, Councilor Heist. Council Prentice?
Council Prentice votes yes. Thank you.
Council Zook?
Council Zook votes yes.
Councilor Hill?
Councilor Hill votes yes.
Thank you. And Assistant Mayor Beal recuses himself on that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, that's unanimous with one recusal. So let's move on to the similar request from Three Tomatoes Trattoria. Do you want to address that separately or?
I think I pretty much covered this. Any further questions? That area will be closed off at that same period of time. Again, the tent will be installed, assuming you approve it, but be installed tomorrow on a next operation, if that you want.
Would someone like to make the motion with regard to Three Tomatoes?
Councilor Winnie will make a motion.
Go for it, Council Winnie.
For the purpose of amending the April 1, 2020 exemption to serve alcoholic beverages on city-owned property. Be it moved that the Lebanon City Council hereby grants an amended exemption to the Three Tomatoes Trattoria to serve alcoholic beverages within the bounds of their designated outdoor seating area, which has been expanded to include a portion of Court Street and a larger portion of the Lebanon pedestrian mall, as shown on the map included in the May 13th, 2020 City Council Agenda Packet. Be it further moved that the exemption to serve alcohol within the expanded seating area shall only be valid through the duration of the closure of Court Street, currently planned for May 15, 2020 through September 15, 2020. Should outdoor seating and the service of alcoholic beverages be desired beyond September 15, 2020, it will be restricted to the area designated within the pedestrian mall.
Thank you very much. We have a second.
Second, Council Prentice.
Council Prentice seconds. We'll do a roll call vote. Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes in favor.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Bronner? Yes. Council Heist?
Council Heist votes aye.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes. Thank you.
Council Zook?
Council Zook votes yes.
Council Hill? Council Hill?
Council Hill votes yes.
Thank you. Mayor McMurro votes yes, and I believe that Council Beal is recusing himself again. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, the vote is eight in favor, one recusal. This request also passes. So good luck to both Salt Hill and Three Tomatoes for this expanded outdoor seating. I think we're going to look very European this summer, so very excited about that. Okay, moving on to our second two items of new business. The first is our end of calendar year, fiscal year 2019 and first quarter 2020 budget reports.
The first thing I want to talk about is the 2019, okay, end of year report. While we're on the screen, a minute, folks. Put those screens down. Hold on a second. We'll get it up there for you here. Let's see. There we go. Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening. Vicki Lee, the Finance Director. I also have here Tina Sterns, the Deputy Finance Director, as well as Doug Smith, who is our financial consultant, who's been helping us out. He is on the teams. So overall.
Mr. Mount, folks. Can everybody see this on their screen?
Council Winnie can.
Okay, Council Winnie can. I'll bet everybody can. Okay, Vicki, go do it.
Overall, the city ended the year on a positive note. Operating revenues were over the estimated amount by $2,375,996 and expenditures came in under budget by $1,217,078. This is for all funds combined. If you look at Exhibit A that is attached to this memo, the general fund indicates that approximately $509,000 or 1.8% of the approved fiscal year budget will be returned to fund balance. The amount returned to fund balance is net of both amounts expended and amounts encumbered as of 12/31/19. From that amount, the savings were primarily due to staff position vacancies. If we go to Exhibit B, for 2019, the general fund operating revenues were over the estimated amount by $1,676,507,000. It's also shown on Exhibit D, but keeping on Exhibit B, the highlights over budget were basically interest on investments for $126,000, motor vehicles for $277,000, building permits was $111,000. According to planning, it was Pine Tree Lane and Beach Wood Lane Apartments along with seven others that had amounts of $10,000 or greater. The ambulance service was over $216,000. We also received a municipal aid grant for unexpected municipal aid grant for $163,993. And we also received a premium from Crimex for $153,650. We also came in over our year taxes and FEMA. We did get a small amount of money unexpected also. So if we turn to Exhibit C, Solid Waste Disposal Fund. It's way down the end. The Solid Waste Disposal Fund, which is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the landfill, recycling facilities and hazardous waste processing. Their revenues at year-end were $398,343, higher than budgeted, and their expenditures were $186,052 at year-end, less than budgeted. Water Treatment Fund is responsible for the provision and distribution of clean and safe drinking water, the planning, maintenance, replacement of water treatment facilities, pump stations, water tanks and the water distribution system. Year-end revenues were $114,377, higher than budgeted, and expenditures at year-end were $104,539, less than budgeted. Year Sewage Collection and Disposal Fund, responsible for the safe and hygienic collection and treatment of wastewater and the planning, maintenance and replacement of the wastewater collection system, pump stations and wastewater treatment. Revenues were at year-end $12,825, higher than budgeted, and expenditures at year-end were $227,919, less than budgeted. Year Municipal Airport, which is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the Lebanon Airport, at year-end revenues were $173,943, higher than budgeted, and expenditures at year-end were $108,374, less than budgeted. Emergency Management, which is responsible for the development, operation and maintenance of all aspects of emergency preparedness. That's the $25,000 that we budget every year. Exhibit D shows all the funds at a quick glance, and every fund actually came in extremely well. As you can see, all the credits that we do have there. And that's pretty much year-end. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, councilors? This is all very good news. Good way to add 2019.
Yes, these are unaudited financials at this point. The audit is presently going on at this moment.
When do we expect the results of the audit back, Vicki?
They probably have another two to three weeks working on it, so I would say within five or six weeks at the most.
So we'll see the auditors reported? Couple months?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say that's a good guess. Earlier than last year.
Councilors, any other questions for Vicki? Okay, go ahead.
So we will go to the first quarter.
Bear with us a minute. We're just switching screens. Switching screens.
So this report highlights the key points for the city's general fund, operating budget, the solid waste, water treatment, sewage collection and disposal, municipal airport, emergency management and funding capital projects. And on Exhibit A, it'll summarize the appropriation expenditures and the amounts encumbered as of March 31st by department. The quarterly totals indicate that approximately 30.3% of the general fund appropriations have been expended or encumbered. Not all operating costs are absorbed equally over the course. Most of the debt payments aren't usually due until the third and fourth quarter. What we do get in the first quarter is our nonprofit organization is distributed usually the first month, and that was $270,000 for 2020. Exhibit B summarizes amount budgeted and collected year-to-date by general revenue category. Our tax bills actually will go out May 29th due July 1st. Motor vehicle registrations at the end of March were pretty much on target, however, April, we did see a large drop. Ambulance services is down approximately 5% from March of 2019. EMS calls are down about 30% currently. Recreation programs, you will see that there was revenue. That will change next quarter report as we are in the process of doing refunds for the day camps and other rep programs that won't be held due to the COVID-19 restrictions. Interest rates, they're low. Both short-term and long-term rates have been impacted by this economic environment. So as we go to Exhibit C, you will see all the other funds of what we've collected and spent to date. And does anybody have any questions on the first quarter?
Exhibit C, okay. Give us a second.
That will show you revenues of all the other funds and then the expenditures of your funds. Currently, there's not much to say the first quarter. Second quarter, I'm sure there'll be huge difference.
Councilors, any questions on these first quarter reports? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Okay, let's get this and pull up the other one. Folks, are you seeing the 2020 financial outlook? PowerPoint on your screens?
Council Winnie is.
Council Winnie, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to be tatted teaming, both Vicki and I. Some of the slides I used, some of the slides I presented to you earlier, and some of those have been updated. And then there's a whole lot of other slides that are new.
Sean?
Yeah?
Could you move the display of people off to the side? And perhaps, I don't know, I don't seem to be able to control that on my panel. And it just shrinks the presentation as it appears on our screen. I don't know if that's possible.
Not, that's on your end, not on mine.
Okay. I don't know how to change it. Okay, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. All right, so I already went over this with you earlier, talking about the impacts of COVID-19. There isn't a whole lot that's changed with that. Obviously, states are now reopening 45 out of 50, are in different stages of reopening, and they will be throughout the rest of this month. And some are already pulling back on some of those moves, so that's going to have an impact on the economy in those particular states. So far, our state is still in the process of opening and has not withdrawn any of those processes that are presently underway.
Sean?
Yes?
Sorry, it's Paula. Can I interrupt for just a second?
Absolutely.
For anybody who wants to get rid of that display with, that shows everybody that's participating, if you hover over and you go into your three dots that has the more actions and you click the full screen, then it will show you the full screen on whatever device you're using.
We'll give everybody a second to do that. All right, so the unemployment rate now, there's talk that it could be as high as 25%. I know I was on a conference call today in the town of, city of Franklin, it's presently at 30% unemployment rate. So some of our cities are already hit. Obviously, the cities is not as high, our city is not as high as that. In fact, we have so far the lowest unemployment rate of all the cities in the state. That doesn't include the town, but at least the cities. And that's somewhere around 3% or 4%, and back and forth over there. That's not to be confused with the slide that I'm going to show here about the number of, the rate of increase in people actually applying. That's, that's a different slide. And again, you saw this slide before from nationally, the cities will have, it looks like we're on track to have the highest unemployment rate in the nation's history since the Great Depression. And again, this showed the rates of increase of people applying, not the actual unemployment rate that they give in town or city. And again, even in this slide with the, with the lowest amount of the city, Sean, and we're actually the lowest amount of all the cities. Is that over the same period last year, Sean? No, that's just the same increase from the month before. Okay. When it wasn't impacted at all. And the rate, the new rate came on on April 30th, and instead of 10.8, it was like 11.2 or something like that, it was 11 something. That's the rate of new people filing, not the actual unemployment, the total number of people that are unemployed. It's much lower than that. It's like 3%, something like that. Okay, this shows you the various fees that we get. Property taxes, the number one source of revenue for the city, motor vehicle registrations is a second. Rooms and meals tax from the state, which of course is an unknown. Development fees, utility users tax, basically they're fees we have for water and sewer, as well as the solid waste facility franchise fee agreements that we have, for instance, with Comcast. And then recreation fee programs, a lot of those have taken a big hit, but we'll talk about that as we move on. This hasn't changed in the last time. And the objectives have not changed at all, as we had talked about the last time, that we were moving forward as well as our strategy. Just to remind you of what they are. And this was the example I showed that if we did take a 10% hit, 10% reduction in property tax revenue, what that would look like. That would put a $5.2 million hole in the city's budget that we would have to make up from one of various different ways, either from budget decisions, which we've already done some of those, or we'd have to come out of the unassigned fund balance. And I leave the note that at the bottom, the impact of that would be rather severe in terms of our discipline and capability. Vicki, you want to just on that?
Just a reminder that when we do take in property tax payments, we are still liable to pay the school and the county tax. So if people don't pay, we still have to pay the school and the county.
So I used, the last time this slide came out, it showed a $9 million in fund balance. No, it's actually 12 because we're actually using what we have for 20. And that was as at the audit last year when we had the nine. And the rescissions projected, projected to actually be over $800,000 right now. If we do not move forward with the pools or the adventure camp, which I suspect we're probably not going to, but that decision will be held off for at least another week. But I suspect it will actually be over that $800,000 in budget rescissions. As you saw before, I already issued $786,000 in budget rescissions. And like I said, once we're done here, I think we're going to be above that. I know we're going to be above that $800,000 number. And there's a third set of rescissions that I have in front of me now that I'm reviewing and I'm folding off on those for now. Those involve far more painful cuts in budget and direct impacts on services, and I'm holding off on those for now. If there's any questions as I'm going along, because again, these first few slides we're going through quickly. But if there are any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. So one thing that we also have is because of the $1 million we got for the airport, we don't have to have a subsidy for that this year, correct? Right, so you've got to remember, the subsidy that, for instance, what will go on in the tax rate for the, when we set the tax rate in the fall for 2020 is two years ago at the airport, because that's two years behind. So this will, the fact that the federal government is providing is eliminating what would be the subsidy from the general fund for the 2020 year. We won't see that until 2022. Gotcha. It's based on audited reports, though, again. Okay? Thank you. Certainly good news, though, either way. What we did is we did, these are new slides, what we did is we looked back to the previous recession just to see if we could make any comparisons at all as to what sort of impact there was. This is where other towns and cities are doing. The difference for our city is that we were very, the impacts were not very significant. They were minor. And this shows the uncollected property taxes, and Vicki's going to talk about that.
As you'll see, the spike in 2010 for the percent uncollected, it was 7.5 million. That's what that 17.6 represents. And also, if you look at the next year, which is 2012, it was $6.4 million, which is the 14.5%. Our average is normally around two. The blue is the lean. So you'll notice that even though you have those spikes in uncollected, by the time that property tax went to lean, it was, it's pretty much stayed normal. So people were paying it by the time it went to lean.
So the true number that we have to look at is the blue column, that 2%. It's not so much what was uncollected at the end of the year, and we knew the leans in the spring. So the taxes are due, the fall tax is due usually in December. So that represents 17.6% of people that actually didn't pay it on time, but they did pay it by April or May when the leans went out. So that lagged a few months before it came in. So the true number of uncollected is the 2% in the case of 2010 and 2.2% in the case of 2012. Obviously, that's a very small number. That's an average number for most communities in a good year, because that's when they pay their taxes on time. We have a very, very high collection rate. So the point is that there was almost no impact on property taxes in the 2008 recession. And we'll talk about some of the other revenues here as we move along. Motor vehicle registrations.
We looked at these previous, you know, years for recession, and there really wasn't too much of an impact. The years basically were 2010 and 12, and you don't see where it really gets.
Right, so we do have a bit of an impact now. Kristin, if you just want to talk about that, what we're looking at, just at least handily?
Yes. So it's basically down by about 4% from where we were last year. But we also have to remember that the temporary plates that people have on their cars right now, they can extend it to go out through the end of May. So there were quite a few weeks where we weren't doing a lot of new registrations because people had all that time. So now we're coming down to the end of this period, which is May 31st. We're seeing an uptick in people contacting us to get their new cars registered. So I, I don't think we're going to be too far off this year.
Or at least for the last.
At least based on the last, yes.
Then we had water, sewer bills, uncollected, Vicki?
Yep, and if we look at 2008, the 2.1 for water uncollected was out of a $2 million amount. And also for sewer was the 3.1. Uncollected was about 62,000 out of 2 million. For 2010, we had the 2.4 for water. So uncollected was 54,000 from the 2.2 million. And sewer was 2% uncollected from 2.8 million.
So this just shows you a range. Obviously, when you have a recession, it goes over multiple years. And 2013 is considered the year that we were out of recession and we had recovered from that. So that's why we show that particular range of that. So I guess, again, the most important thing is we look back at 2008, and really, we can't compare that recession from what we're seeing right now. This is a totally different situation. We really don't know what to expect. And I think we won't know until we see the first tax bills when they go off, and what actually, what comes into our coffers as of July 1, the due date for that. So really, there's just a whole lot that's unknown. It's very difficult to try to project what might occur until we have better data. And then on this one, I showed this before as well, that we've got a hold on these state capital projects. And I say that because that's what the governor had made a statement to us. However, we don't have any official word at all that any of these projects are on hold. That is what the governor told myself and the mayor on a conference call. And when we talked to DOT in particular, they say, well, right now, we, you know, we're continuing to process these projects as they are. And they won't, basically, won't answer that question, because I don't think they have a definitive answer from the governor yet. So there's the best answer we can provide to you on that. We still don't know what's going to happen with rooms and meals tax distribution, and I don't think we're going to know for a while yet. And highway block grant money is based upon gas tax. That would not likely impact us in this first year, it would be the subsequent years, because it trails back in previous history of the gas tax. And then the $20 million of revenue sharing for this year, and then of course, the next $20 million next year remains to be seen as to whether we'll receive any of those funds at all. It's all very much up to here. This slide I showed you before, I made a few changes to this. Basically, most of the changes are the last little green block down at the bottom. We received a lot, about $326,000 for CARES Act Phase 1. That's a portion of the $1.25 billion that the state has received. That's how much we're allotted to for, for things other than what's covered by the Stafford Act. And those is a variety of different things that would apply. For instance, if we have additional welfare costs because of COVID-19, we could, we could seek reimbursement under that. Additional IT costs, which we have a number of those, we can seek reimbursement for that. The planters we're going to park, we're going to put out front here starting Friday, those are reimbursable, we're going to be putting in for those. Assistance we provided, UVBA to work with our businesses, we're going to get reimbursement for that, we're seeking that. When employees are out of COVID-19 leave for, if they're out for quarantine or isolation, we're supposed to be able to, to apply for that and be reimbursed for that. At least that's what the guidance says right now. But unlike the Stafford Act, which is set by law, it has very clear directives in how that money can be reimbursed, what the process is. This CARES Act money is not at all clear. And the guidance we're getting is rather confusing. And that's not a complaint, that's, the state folks are really doing the best they can to push this money down to towns and cities. But it still leaves unintended consequences and a lot of unthought about questions. For instance, the stipends for first response, we expect that'll be about $160,000. All those payroll taxes, the pieces that go along with that that were not anticipated, we have to pick those up. But even the guidance of an hour ago says that we can still get that reimbursed out of that $326,000. That, that just came out an hour ago. So they're, they're doing a better job of refining what the guidance is and how they're going to reimburse us for these things, and that will change over time. It's just going to be a little frustrating for everybody, both us and the state folks trying to work through this. Now, after the Phase 1 of that, that goes to, I think it's, maybe the beginning around August. I think it's in August, yeah. There's supposed to be a Phase 2 piece of that with another allotment of money, and that remains to be seen as to how that's, how much that's going to be. I was on a phone call today, Representative Ha Mayor, with Senator Shaheen, with the other mayors. And there is a bill that, the next stimulus bill in front of the Congress right now is another, another trillion dollars. 500 of that would go to the states and localities, local governments, municipalities. Some of that money, 250 billion of that, is supposed to be able to be used for loss of revenue. Now, this is what they tried to do in the first three and a half, I'll call them, stimulus bills. Unsuccessful. It remains to be seen as to whether or not that's actually going to be passed. There's a lot of controversy with that, the present administration, as well as some members of the House and the Senate. So that is what they're, Senator Shaheen and our delegation is asking for. We'll see what happens with that. It's probably going to be several more weeks before they pass that, which is not a problem for us, because we are the only city that is not at the end of the budget process. The other cities are at the very end of their budget process. Their new budgets will take effect on July 1. So they're in a very precarious spot. They don't know whether they should make deep, deep cuts in their budgets, or how to anticipate their revenues, because they really don't know what the landscape is. We're fortunate, we're the only city that has a calendar year budget. There are towns that obviously do. But we're the only city that has a calendar year budget, and we'll have time to react before we set our budget in the fall. Any questions about that before I move on about federal assistance or state assistance as it is today? Sounds like we're all set. There was also talk about stimulus funds. There's no stimulus funds on, in this one, this new $1 trillion stimulus bill. When I say stimulus funds, I mean for infrastructure projects. There was $15 billion in there for transportation, but it was really unclear what that is. And I say it's unclear, the staff and Senator Shaheen's office just got the bill yesterday. It's a House bill, not a Senate bill. So they're, they're still going through the very, very lengthy document to find out what is actually covered by that $15 billion for transportation, whether it's, it's for infrastructure, whether it's for mass transit, or just what it is. And move on to debt service projections.
So the CSO has taken precedence over the last few years, which hasn't allowed for other capital projects. You'll see in my memo, I have a chart in there also on the debt, which CSO is, is in there. So we will be, we will be getting, we will be having to make payments next year, because as CSO ends at the end of this year, we start making payments next year. The only one, I believe, would be CSO 13, which will follow, will go into 2021, and we'll do payments the following year.
So the important thing to remember about this, this is obviously a plan that's been in place for many years now, with predicted tax rate increases and also predicted use of fund balance, and also building the fund balance for the very next year we're talking about. And you'll see in the next slides, you've seen these before. But that's where the rate of debt service increase goes up considerably. So all this time, the plan was to build the unassigned fund balance so that we could actually deal with that debt service increase without dramatic tax spikes. And also, it also predicated that we had the increase in the tax rate, too, to meet that demand afterwards, had to be built up on a gradual basis to avoid those large spikes. And that's a recurring theme that you will hear throughout the night.
And that's just what Sean stated regarding the tax increases. The planned tax rate increases that we had, you had set for 2020 was 3%, 2021 at 3%. 2022 was, was projected at 3%, but we're thinking that we can do the 2.5% each year after versus the original 3%.
Tax rate change.
So on the tax rate, this doesn't take in consideration for the revow. Right now, do you want to talk about the revow?
Yeah, so obviously, these tax rates have been predicted for quite some time. But what they don't take into account is the revow that's presently going on right now. So we have a tax rate that's based upon the old evaluation at 1159 for 2020, and the same thing for 2021 at 1193. But we're conducting a revow, so that's going to change the entire base of the tax base.
Yep, so it's projected to, projected to have 11.9 million in new assessed value, which will take our estimated 5% now to 0.62, well, it'll be 62%.
Right, so what she's talking about is the evaluations that this year, we had projected that the inventory, new inventory was going to go up by half a percent. As you know, we've always projected about a half a percent. Last year was 0.3. Yeah, 0.3 something. So it didn't come in at the half a percent we projected. This year, we projected half a percent, we got in 0.62.
0.62.
So actually, we're above our projections in new inventory that we, that came online effective for April 1 of this particular year. So that's good news. Obviously, the revow is going to change the tax rate as well. We're anticipating that residential is going to go up by 10 or 20%. And commercial could go up as much as 50%, possibly even more for some particular projects. So that will change the, the entire base of the taxes and will change the tax rate. But it won't change the amount people are paying, that's the key thing. Everybody thinks, well, yeah, if the tax rate goes down, that means people pay less money. That is not the case when you're doing a revow. So my house is worth $100,000 before the revow, and now it's $200,000. My tax rate might go down, the amount of tax we're going to pay is going to be about the same. I want to make sure everybody understands, I think you all understand that. Although you haven't seen that here in the city. Last time we did a revow was 2015, and there wasn't much of a change in values. So it didn't affect your tax rate, though. This time, we expect, you're going to see a, a change in the tax rate. Does everybody understand what I'm saying with that?
So as you can see, for 2020, we have a large jump in 2021. And as you can see on page 5 of my memo, that is to do to the bonds that we are going to be taking out. I'm in the process currently, taking out a bond. And CSO is included, I shouldn't say the CSO is included, that bond, CSO will be included in the payments for 2021.
So the important thing is you see that the change from 2020 to 21, this is what we've been talking about, this is what we've been projecting for a very long time. This is why we've been building fund balance to offset that. Be able to use that to avoid that huge tax spike. If we didn't do that, we'd have a significant tax spike to make up the difference between a 3.799 to go to almost 5.1. And that's why we've had the gradual, well, some people wouldn't consider gradual, 3%, but we've had the tax rate increases to allow us, once we use that fund balance in 2021, the tax rate will be sufficient to bring in the revenues to meet the demands of debt services moving forward. And remember, again, for 2022, the projection was 3%. Right now, we're projecting 2.5% of a tax rate increase. Remember, this also only includes existing projects that have been approved by the council. Does not include any new projects. So it looks as if, obviously, by the time you get to 2025, the debt service goes down. Well, that is true if you did not do any new capital projects for the next five years. That would be true. Obviously, if you do any new debt, any new capital projects, which are obviously we're proposing to do, that's going to increase the amount of debt service in those subsequent years. Questions there?
As Sean stated, too, the 1.3 million will be used for fund balance. This will be a one-time only. As you'll see on, in my memo, actually, you'll see where we've talked about that quite a bit. So if you need more information for that, the city's reserve accumulations were intentionally placed to address the debt service requirements that are now coming to fruition. Our unassigned balance is approximately 12 million. We also have an audited financial statement, and they did state that there could be an adjustment in, let's see, what did he tell me? He did tell me there might be one adjustment. But I'm, I'm pretty confident it'll stay right around that 12 million, which will mean. And there's also another chart per, on page 8 of the memo that shows what the projected 19 is and what the projected 20 and 21 fund balance will be. And that will be to, like, the big jump that you'll see from 2021 was the 1.3 plus the 2.1 to offset the tax rate.
The important thing to look at with this, we're using a lot more fund balance to stabilize the tax rate. I'm not talking about the 1.3, I'm talking about the 2.1. A lot of cities don't use any fund balance to offset their tax rate, and a lot of towns don't either. I'll give an example, Tammany Dairy, which is three times our size, they use $600,000 in fund balance to offset their taxes. We're using a very large amount to do that. That is a situation I'd like to get away from. You can't do it immediately, it takes time to do that. But avoid using that, because really what we're doing is we're artificially subsidizing the tax rate. That's going to take time to fix that. What we should be using on assigned fund balance is to fill our capital reserve funds to avoid having to borrow money from things like vehicles and small projects like that in these studies. Because where most communities are not borrowing money to do studies, we are doing that in engineering analysis. So that's something we kind of want to avoid over the long term.
Basically, what you just said.
Yeah, this just covers what I just said, there, the page you go.
I found my note for the auditors. The adjustment could be reserved for contingencies that haven't been accounted for. So that was my, that was looking for. On this page, our policy currently is 19% to 24% for fund balance. At the end of 2019, it will be 37.5%, 38%. If, again, on page 8 of my report, it shows the fund balance amounts are based on, you know, property tax revenue coming in as anticipated also. Let's see.
Hi, this is Counselor Hill with a question.
Yes, Counselor Hill.
Um, so I, I, we have been purposefully building up the fund balance over and above our policy target of 19 to 24%. I mean, isn't that right?
That is correct, that's what we've been stating. And that's why we're going to be using some of this now, so we don't have to increase the tax rate. We're going to be taking some out of fund balance to offset this next bond that's going out and the CSO payments that will be coming in.
Right, and we've been using the fund balance for, like, for smoothing the tax rate for the last, well, probably for the entire duration of the CSO. So I'm not, I, I, I mean, I guess, I just wanted to say that, like, that's been, we've been doing that intentionally of, of carrying high, undesigneded fund balances for, for the very purpose of being able to smooth, to, to smooth tax rate increases particularly related to bonding. So I, I agree with Sean's long, you know, with the long-term plan of, of getting away from using the unassigned fund balance for that. But I guess I, I guess I want to, I just want to put it out there that we've been doing that intentionally for the last 10-plus years. That wasn't, that wasn't just an accidental, like, an oversight. We've been intentionally using the fund balance to, in, in a, for fiscal policy management so that we could smooth the tax rate and avoid, avoid spikes. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, no one's stated the contrary. That's, that clearly has been the policy that has been in practice. And I would suggest a very wise one, that you really did have a whole lot of choice. a whole lot of choice in order to, as you, as you indicated, Counselor Hill, to minimize any tax spikes, to keep them on the planned tax rate increases that you had. In order to do that, you had to use fund balance to do that. So I'm not suggesting it was inappropriate at all, in fact, it was very, a very wise decision to do that, wherever the council was back then, of course, the finance director who developed this plan, very wise decision to do that. But what I am saying is, other than that, it is not a good policy to be using fund balance like that to offset your tax rate. And someday, we've got to get away from that, try to get ourselves out of that spot, which is not going to be easy to do. Actually, we built the fund balance up substantially starting in 2013, so the last five years, five or six years, we've really made an effort to get that fund balance up, with the idea that we're going to have to spend it down. Right, and that's why, you have the tax rate increases that you've had to allow for that to be built up, to hit this one particular spike in particular going from 2021. That was the biggest part of it, and you have been using it all along, yes. But again, once we get post, once we get on the CSO era, the goal is to get out of that practice of doing that. It's what needed to be done at the time and still needs to be done until we get beyond that, to keep us in a good fiscal position.
I'd like to comment on that. I, I'm not sure it's really necessarily at all inappropriate to use the annual, an annual increase in fund balance to reduce the tax rate for the following year from what it would otherwise be. It's, it's just, in, in the state budgeting process, those funds lapse and, and are just automatically used as funds that are, were appropriated but unused and kind of automatically go back to reduce taxes to what they would otherwise be. Otherwise, I mean, in, in many cases, I've seen things where we could budget tighter because we don't always expend the funds, but knowing that the, anything we don't expend will help go to reduce the following year's tax rate makes that less critical. So I just observe, I think there's a balance to be had there. I don't disagree with the idea that it might be prudent, as we, you know, looking over the wrong, long run, to use a fund balance, for instance, to do studies or to put into a reserve, so we don't have to borrow funds or have taxes, a rate increases in the future. But I, but I also don't think it's inappropriate to, to really use the surplus from one year to offset the budget for the following year, that, that's all.
As long as when you get into that habit, when you're in a poor community, because I've lived that life before, then you're relying upon what you have available to you. If you don't have it available, like, right now, we might have to take money out of that to be able to use that just to keep the tax rate the way it is. If you have a whole bad recession or what we're dealing with right now, that's a problem when you get your fund balance down to a point and you're, and you're constantly using a fairly large amount of your fund balance to reduce your tax rate, that's when you get into trouble. That's, that's the problem with that, that's why I want to get us out of that habit in the long term. It's going to be long after I'm gone before as far as we can do that.
Right. Maintain a rainy day fund, yeah.
Am I still muted?
No, we can hear you, Counselor Slides.
Thank you. I, I just would agree with Counselor Beal. I would also point out that county government has used its undesigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance to level out its tax rates over time as well, but they always keep in mind looking to have a certain percentage available, so they only take a small amount of it. And it sounds like that's what we're trying to do, is, is have a, keep within the policy. We've gone ahead with the policy in terms of the, the amount that we have in the unassigned fund balance, but as we draw it down from that, we'll keep, hopefully keep track of a policy that keeps sufficient unassigned fund balance moving forward.
And that, that's the important part, when you go back to the chart that Vicki was talking about in her memo, by the end of 2021, we're down to 19.2%, which is the bottom of the range. And then we start to get in the area where we enter the danger zone.
All right, that's, I'm glad to hear that, I hadn't heard that number, thank you, Mr. City Management.
Yeah, what page is that on, Vicki? Page 8, page 8. If you look at page 8, if you look at 2021, the anticipate, we're projecting the fund balance at the end of the year, 19.2%. That's how close to the wire it's going to be. Now, that also assumes that we don't have a big hole based upon property tax revenues that may or may not come in over the next couple of months. Otherwise, that fund balance will go below the 19% if we're going to keep the same tax rate. So there's a number of factors that, that go into this. Part of this is going to have to wait and see what happens in the next several months.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have developed a plan in regards to what we're going to do post-CSO. This is our plan to reduce the amount of debt that the city has. We have far more debt than most communities of our size and even far more debt than the communities that are larger than us in our particular state because of the CSO. That is, I, you've heard that probably a thousand times, at the spot that we're in. And that has pushed back the ability of the other projects that other communities may have been able to do. So what we are proposing is that we will, when debt is actually retired, in other words, the principal payment we make in the general fund, for instance, in 2021, we're only going to borrow that same amount of money, but we're going to aggregate that over, over 21 to 26. So in other words, between the year 2021 and 2026, we're going to retire 20 million, 20.7 million dollars in debt, that's principal of debt. So we're not going to, we're proposing not to borrow any more when we're retiring. What that does is that simply levels out our debt. It doesn't eliminate it, but it levels it up, because right now, it's been growing at what I would suggest is a pretty considerable rate, a rate that we cannot continue to let it, allow it to grow at. That's going to cause some significant pain in terms of being able to deal with all the projects that are backlogged presently. That's only 20.7 million dollars over a six-year, over that entire, that period from 21 to 26. Again, it levels up the city's debt load and allows for a transition to a long-term financial plan that we talked about stabilization of the tax rate. If we don't do that, we're going to continue to see tax rate increases, we've got to do something to change that. And that, again, will be painful. There's a lot of projects that are being proposed and simply are not going to be able to be funded. Again, this is what we're proposing. Now, there's some caveats with that. And again, this is our plan, it's up to the council to adopt this if it chooses to or not. Some projects that actually will pay for themselves, and landfill gas to energy project is an example of that. Now, granted, that's, we're talking about the general fund and that's actually going to be paid for on the solid waste fund, but if that were a similar project here, over time, that, the money that we will see from the sale of electricity will offset that debt service, what actually pays for itself. That would be the only exception that we're proposing in this particular case. So I know this is new and I'd be interested in some input as to what you think about this concept.
I think it's a very sustainable way to proceed. I mean, we were in a position where we could do nothing but dig ourselves in the hole from the CSO projects because it had to be done, it was mandated. You know, we can all look back and say it should have been done 20 or 30 years ago when there was more federal funding available, but the choice was made at that time not to take advantage of that, not to do that. So we're in the position we're in, we're near the end of the game here, but we got to pay all the money back. So I think this is a very prudent way to proceed. Obviously, I'm not suggesting you accept this, because tonight, you need to think about this, but that, that's going to have consequences, because there's projects that just simply aren't going to be able to occur and that there'll be pain with that. The greatest needs to understand that. Well, I think we're going to have to be creative in maintaining a high quality life for the least amount of money and it's going to be a no-frills world for a while. I just don't see any way around that and not pass an unsustainable debt load on to future generations.
So to give you some idea, the, the, obviously, the CIP was 11 million dollars for 2020 alone. And that's not just a general fund, that's a project, again, we're just talking, but still, it's not, we're talking about the whole period from 21 to 26. So again, something for you to think about on that.
I wanted to mention, I appreciate the notation, the exception for things that might be revenue expenditure neutral. Besides the landfill gas to energy, the LED street lighting project is another example that, and in five years, we'll have the option to buy out the PV systems, which, which would actually result in increased savings even if we borrow funds to do that. So that would be another example of where that exception might be appropriate to consider.
That's a good point and that is another example, one of those. The other thing to think about too is if there are projects that have grant funds involved, depending upon what that makeup is, whether it's 80, 20, those sorts of things, that's something to think about. When I was, when I was developing this, I was including those state projects where they pay 80 and we pay 20, I was including that in the 20 million. But there may be stimulus projects that come in that are going to pay who knows what percentage, they usually don't pay the whole thing, but sometimes they might, who knows what we're going to get in the future, but it leaves some room to think about for those. I really didn't talk too much about that with the, the guidance I put out there a few minutes ago.
I think it's important that, and we've, we've started to do this, is to have projects lined up and maybe not shovel-ready, but at least pretty close to being shovel-ready so that if something comes up, we can take advantage of, we're in a position to do so, rather than being behind the eight ball. It's not bad to have a few in the hop.
And, and that's where we are. Right now, when we put together the CIP, all the projects are going to be listed in there, some of them are not going to be funded, so usually you see all of them, they, they get stacked in there over the years, you're going to have a whole other category that's simply unfunded now and doesn't have a year on it, and that'll be the, I think, the first time we'll see that. That's the change. And like you just said, that allows us to have these projects ready to go in the event that there is funds that might be available that we can use and we can now add those in.
This is Counselor Hill.
Yes, Counselor Hill.
I, I like the idea, I have some ambivalence about this concept. Certainly, I think in terms of a guideline, it is, it, it is consistent with a, with a goal of sustainability. There was a movement, maybe eight years ago, a little more around the state to impose tax caps. That was a movement that decidedly did not take hold in the city of Lebanon. And I think for good reason. We are not, I think, it, it's not always prudent to impose those kinds of arbitrary, now, it might be for good reason, but it is still imposing a potentially arbitrary restriction on ourselves. And so I, while on the one hand, I can understand why it would be a good thing, I can also envision that there might be times when it would actually be prudent to not follow that, to, to, to not follow that and to make an exception. And, and that's why we don't have tax caps in the city of Lebanon. We've left it to the city council to make those decisions on a year-to-year basis and on a project-by-project basis. And I guess I would hearken back to 10 years ago when we had the, the last great recession and we, we made some substantial infrastructure investments at that time, even though it was tough, but things like the Kilton Library, which we ended up contributing to significantly more than the city had originally planned because of fundraising, that did not pan out the way that had originally been anticipated by the Library Board of Trustees. You know, the taxpayers of Lebanon ended up putting in, borrowing more money than we had anticipated, but I think the taxpayers of Lebanon ended up benefiting from that and I'm not sure that there's anyone who is second guessing that decision. And so I guess I just want to put that out there, that I, I can see why this would be a, it's a, it's a guideline and if we can use it as a guideline, that's one thing, but I also think that there needs to be some, there still ought to be space for discretion and I would not want to kind of adopt this as a, as a specific ordinance or even a specific policy. I think if it's a guideline and a, and a concept, that's, that's probably good, but I think we also need to recognize that sometimes there are extraordinary circumstances where we might want to make a different decision. So that's all, just a little cautionary note.
Thank you. All right, so as I said before, projects have backed up because again, with all of our debt service, with all of our debt capacity was going towards the CSO projects. And I guess some of the good things with the CSO projects, we actually did get a lot of road work done, we replaced a lot of water and sewer lines that we'd have to, arguably do later on anyway, so a lot of that has dealt with the backlog of infrastructure issues, not just as the storm drains, but the road work and sidewalks and all that. So we've got a lot more value other than just the storm drains that go along with that. But the other part of that is fear to address issues can result in cascading impacts. Some of the things, I don't know if you remember this last winter, the city of Manchester had several very large water leaks that, roads that were simply ripped apart and they had a lot of damage to people's properties, it was filling basements and things like that. Their system is in really poor condition and this is not uncommon for a lot of the cities and towns across New England, because they're all, they're old. We're, New England and the East Coast is the oldest part of the country and has the oldest infrastructure. Our infrastructure, we've had a number of water main breaks across the winter as well, even when it wasn't cold. Those are signs that we have failures in our system. Those are some of the telltale signs. And if we fail to address those, that's only going to get worse. And I don't want to end up in that situation, I know you don't either. So that's, if we, if we don't deal with some of those issues, again, they will get worse over time. And I use that example of the town of Hampton, where they had a sewer main issue that went across the salt marsh, they had the option of fixing that, I think it was like a main to fix it, don't quote me, in the dollar amount. And then they failed to do that, the next winter, that sewer main collapsed and it cost them three, over $3 million to fix that. So that's the consequences of not acting on infrastructure that's beyond its useful life and that you know is at risk.
I mean, I think in, in any of these infrastructure issues, you have to look at a couple of things, in my opinion. One is you've got to look at how good your data is, so you know more about a road that you can see that has potholes in it than a sewer main that's 20 feet down that you may have cambered, but you're never quite sure what the condition is. And then there's the ramifications of failure. So, you know, the ramifications of potholes is probably a bit less than the ramifications of a sewer main collapsing across the salt marsh. So I think we have to balance those two things and, and, you know, make the appropriate investments. And I think that the study that we've recently completed on road conditions certainly helps to guide us there, but we've told everybody that we have well over half a century of road work, you know, that's essentially backed up and we're just going to have to prioritize. And that's just the way it's going to be. We may feel very differently about water and sewer mains because the ramifications of failure are much more catastrophic than a road that's gradually degrading.
I, I guess the good news of this is you folks have been doing that, you've actually done more than most other communities and a lot of that is powering your CSO projects, replacing water and sewers. And then you approve the rehabilitation, rehabilitation projects for sewer. We just haven't really done anything for water other than, and it's been a lot actually for the CSO, for a lot of water mains have been fixed, but we have a lot of water mains that still are, are an issue. We're making good progress on our sewer mains, so this council's approved, this council and previous councils have approved funds and you're doing a lot better than other communities in fixing your infrastructure, sewer, infrastructure, we're in a lot better shape than other places. And yes, certainly, we have problems with roads, but I think we have a good solid plan to address that moving forward. They're not all going to be smooth roads with nice black asphalt over the next three years, but again, we're making good progress on fixing those and we're doing a lot better than most of the communities and that's a credit to the approval of the council for the funds to get that done. But again, I just want to make the, the point that by failing to make investments in certain things, there, there are consequences for that, I think you folks have stated that. Water funds.
This was actually taken from the water rate study from Raftellus when they were here and the projected rates were the 8% increase until 2023. And again, the 8% increase in water rates doesn't mean that we're going to get in, I mean, the return for us to get in the 8% is much lower in revenue than just adding 8% on the, on the, on the bills. The proposed debt here, you can see, starts increasing in 21 and 22 and 23 and that, those rates are to help cover.
So what you're saying is even though we have an 8% increase in rates, doesn't mean an 8% increase in revenue?
Correct.
It's a lower number, like, more like 3%?
It's about, you know, a little over 3%.
Yeah, that's what we actually bring in, additional revenue for that, so it's not a one-to-one, apples-to-apples comparison. This is a slide you've seen before, this is when Raftellus did the water and sewer rate studies, so there shouldn't be any surprise there.
So on the water date, water debt service, this doesn't include any new projects as well as the other charts that we were talking about. The fund balance since 2004 is listed on Um, the fund balance since 2004 is listed on page eight, just to see when that we've started to increase the fund balance over the last few years. You'll see the large jump from twenty to twenty-one. Um, as, as the thought process that we employ in the city's general fund, we would propose using the water's funds' current reserve to offset the net reserve deficits projected in 2021. Um, a total drawdown of fund balance of approximately six hundred forty-seven thousand. Um, the water fund currently has two point five million in available fund balance. And you can see that on page eight.
The most important takeaway from here is you can see the difference between when we go from 2020 at nine hundred and seventy-four thousand to almost double to one point eight million dollars in debt service. This is a huge increase. And again, it looks like it drops off. That's only if we do not add any more capital projects to water. And as I just talked about, we've got some things we're going to have to address at one point or another with our water distribution system.
And you'll see on page five all the, um, the debt issuance in fiscal year 2020 and 2021. That reflects water and sewer.
Well, we've almost, for example, with water fund balance, we've almost tripled the value of that between 2015 and 2019. So we have, we build that, the whole fund balance up, only to draw it down.
Yes, and I'll show that slide in a minute.
Okay.
And that's this one right here. Yep, Vicky.
So the following presents the plan's impact on water, um, sewer funds. Uh, projected revenues, um, are based on the current annual rate increase to twenty-three, which is eight percent for water and seven point two for sewer. Um, the rate increases for twenty-four and twenty-five, um, we're going to project three percent annually for water and two and a half percent for the sewer fund. Um, I think, as you can see, it starts to drop in, um, 2021.
So the problem we have here, particularly in the water fund, the sewer fund, it's not as big of an issue. But the water fund, we're going to be using about over six hundred thousand dollars in fund balance just to offset the debt service through 2025. That assumes no new projects.
Right, and also what possibly could happen, um, less water usage right now.
Right.
The wet summer, that could possibly happen. Um, we could lose a big user like we did before.
That's the best case scenario.
Best case scenario.
That, that's concerning, obviously, we're drawing that much out of that, out of that fund. Again, this assumes no new projects and sewer obviously looks a lot better. Uh, we were projecting a deficit to sewer. We're in a much better position now with that. But that again assumes no new projects and we do have sewer renovation projects proposed. Now, those are the ones that are along the river that we want to make sure we get lined so we don't have a situation, we have a potential sewer or line collapse at any time of the year. Because that's a very difficult area to get into. It's much better that we proactively do that, a lot less cost proactively line that than it is to respond to a collapsed sewer line, sewer line in the middle of the wintertime along the edge of that river or underneath the river for that matter.
And do the projections for the fund balances include any assumptions of future development? So I'm thinking about several hundred, many hundreds of new units of, uh, residential housing coming onto the sewer system, which we'll be paying, right?
It, it does not include those because those don't, even though there's conceptual plans to do those, none of those actually exist yet, right? But right, the more water users we have, the larger that base is now spread over. And also, they're also going to be paying water development fees.
Right.
Which is part of the plan the council approved for both water and sewer development fees is to try to reduce the amount of these increases in water and sewer rates by putting more of that cost on the, the new developers and the new people coming into the city.
But the answer to my question is that, that those have not been, and I think it's good not to, right? Those have not been factored in.
Because we just don't know what those numbers are actually going to be. So that, that's obviously all a bonus, I think, on what those numbers are and how many more users that are paying more water bills. That doesn't include any of those things, which presumably it will be positive items, right? But we just don't know what they are. We don't want to try to estimate what they are. On the same side, we didn't try to estimate if we're going to have less water usage because if it ends up being a wet summer or if we lose a major employer that uses a, I shouldn't say employer, a major water user doesn't include if we have a loss of one of those.
Yeah.
And it also assumes people are going to continue to pay like they have been paying, right? That changes as well due to the economic situation we're in. That's going to put a bigger hole in this water fund and also the sewer as well. This has been asked before. We put this slide together. This is the water and sewer rate increases over the years. Vicky, you want to talk about those? You can see they jump all over the place.
Yeah, that's been the problem the past.
Right, and that's been smoothed out since, as you can see, 2011, right through, uh, 2023. At least that's how it's planned, that they're down to lower digits. They're obviously very high, but they're not where they were at with fifty-eight percent, twenty-five percent, thirty-eight percent back at the turn of the century.
I started in 2006 and when the bills went out at fifty-eight percent, I was like, what? Um, so we've come a long way from there.
And this is why it's important to maintain a healthy fund balance in water and sewer so we don't have all this jumping around. Because in those previous years, you had holes in your fund balance and that you don't want to be doing. That's basically the airport scenario they have right now. We don't want another situation like that.
Same as the water. Um, this is the, the same, um, graph that I took from the Raftellus plan for the sewer rate study that they did for us, um, same as the water, except the sewer was seven point two percent. But the same thing for the, pretty much follows with the water forecast was. And the same with the sewer fund debt service.
Well, in a different series, we don't have much, it's much of a jump from 2020 to 21.
Yeah. And solid waste, the only huge thing that you'll see on there is the drop in, in 2025, which the landfill expansion bond will be paid off, so that will, that drops.
Well, there's a bit of good news there.
Thanks to end your good news. And also on your packet that, that I did for, for this, um, there are some more information. Um, for instance, on capital reserve, just to show you that we have small amounts in our capital reserve right now. Um, we put money in every year. It seems like we take it out. Um, so that's what Sean stated. We'd like to try to start building up our capital reserve fund so that we can, you know, next time we want to purchase a, a fiber vehicle or, or DPW vehicle, that the money is available there and not have to have it in the budget for the year.
That's part of the, the long-term strategic plan is to avoid having to pay interest for a fire truck or the more expensive, uh, DPW vehicles, is to pay for those with cash, pay-as-you-go. That's the better way to use, I think, the better way to use your cash. That's the end of our presentation to you folks in regards to the financial outlook. Looking forward to the, putting together the 2021 budget in the 2021 CIP.
Counselors, any closing, specific or general comments or questions?
Um, Councilor Bealow here.
Yeah.
I guess we don't, we haven't traditionally seen similar kinds of, um, uh, financial presentations on the solid waste fund, but it, but it's fair to say it's in better shape than, um, water and sewer in, in that it also has considerable fund balance, though some uncertainty is to volume and revenue relative to expenses. But, um, is it fair to say it's, it's generally in better shape than water and sewer in terms of, uh, looking at its debt service relative to its revenue going out?
Yes, you can see the debt service is a much smaller piece of that. And, uh, with the rate increases that we just put in, they put us in a really good financial footing. And the other part of that was we actually took cash out, if you remember, for the Infogas Energy Project, because we had a very healthy fund balance in there. And that's an example, we were able to use our cash to, instead of having to borrow two million dollars worth of bonds for the next twenty years for that project, we're paying cash. So we're in a really good spot in our solid waste fund, obviously for now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions or comments?
Uh, this is Councilor Hill.
Yeah.
I think we have, um, over the last few years, have we been, uh, suggesting a tax rate target at this meeting? Or are we going to be discussing that? How, how is that working this year?
Well, we have a tax rate target. That's, that's three percent. So that's been the plan. The targeted tax rates have been in effect for a long time. At least that's been the plan all along. So if you're going to propose changing that, we would obviously need to know that because that's going to change a lot of the things that we do.
I think our discussion last year, as I recall, was, it was either looking at three or three and a half percent going forward. And I think the direction we gave to the administration was to try to make that more like two and a half percent. Um, that, that's my recollection anyway.
Right, so we had that discussion last year, uh, and I, I recall that as well. But that was, uh, before COVID-19 and the economic, uh, the economic circumstances that we find ourselves in. I, I certainly would like to revisit that. I, I don't think a three percent tax rate increase would be, um, I, I don't think that would be a good idea for the people of Lebanon at this time. So I, I for one would definitely like to revisit that conversation. I think I, I said at the beginning of these budget discussions, of these, um, financial workshops or the, the goal setting, that I would like for us to be looking at a zero, at a flat budget. I don't think that a target that we adopted last year under completely different assumptions, um, is, is really, I don't think it's prudent to, to continue operating under, under that decision. So I, I would strongly like to revisit that, uh, that decision. And, you know, if I'm, if I'm the only one, you know, that's one thing. But I, I would hope that other counselors would be interested, would, would think it was a good idea to revisit that discussion since we made the, we, we agreed to that kind of a target under very, very different economic circumstances.
I, I would offer that, um, yes, that's true. I think that the city manager is certainly working on some additional possible recisions in addition to the eight hundred thousand that he's proposed so far. So there's some work to be done there. I think it would also be prudent for us to hold any further discussion on, um, trying to lower the tax rate further until after we see what happens in July and, and what we've got coming in for taxes. And when we see what the delinquent tax rate is, if it's not substantially more than it has been in the last few years, um, then I think that could lead us down a very different path than if we see it dropping dramatically.
So just to be clear, I think Councilor Hill's talking about twenty-one.
Yeah, I understand.
But I think the, so the recisions I made now affect a twenty tax rate. So I just want to make sure we're clear about which one we're talking about, right? Well, Councilor Hill, we're talking about twenty-one, right?
I'm talking about, yeah, this, the, what we're talking about is goal setting for the twenty-one budget. And the twenty-one budget, we set it, we set, we had, we agreed to kind of a three-year, you know, three percent or less target last year. And I'm just saying that I, I could, I cannot in good faith support a three percent budget increase this year given the economic forecast. I just can't.
For twenty-one?
For twenty-one, correct. I think, I think it's smart for the manager to be making recisions because I don't think we're going to collect all the taxes that we're planning to collect. And so that just means, you know, he's, he's plugging the hole for this, that we're expecting is going to happen for this year. But the recisions don't affect the twenty-one budget. So I, I don't know, I just, I don't know what, we already are seeing businesses go out of business. We're seeing landlords not able to collect rent, both commercially and residentially. I mean, this is, and then this is early and this is still very early. I think six months from now, we're going to know that it, we already can anticipate six months from now, it's going to be significantly worse than it already is. And that's, I think, I, I would prefer to give direction to the city manager and to the department heads now as they go into their budget work, um, instead of going, you know, proceeding as planned with a three percent increase and then having to go and redo everything in the fall when, you know, I, I think we should, I think we should be ahead of this.
Well, I do think this is going to be a multi-year impact. I mean, I can't imagine that an impact that's as dramatic as this has been so far, at least with respect to unemployment and impacts on businesses, is, is going to go away January first. And that's why I was suggesting that, and I understand we're going to be running out of year here, but I think that what happens in July will be indicative of what could happen for the next two years. And it might give us another data point. That, that's all I'm suggesting. What I, what I, you know, it's ultimately going to come down to, can folks pay their taxes at the current rate? Can they pay at that X plus two or two point five or nothing? Um, and I, I feel to me anyway, like we could use a couple more data points in looking forward. So I'm concerned, personally, I'm concerned at the present time about saying, okay, full stop. We want to see the two point five, uh, target go to zero or one point oh or one point five. But I'm certainly open to discussion on that. Any other counselors?
This is Councilor Prentice. So, um, just from a process perspective, we give direction to the department heads for July one, correct? To, to submit their budgets or you, no, you give them the direction for their budgets with the rate that increase we have, either increase or decrease we've decided on.
Yeah, basically, you direct me and then what I would do is you, you, you tell me you want to achieve a certain objective and then it's my responsibility to make that happen, whatever fashion I choose, you know, to make that happen.
But it's in the beginning of July.
Yes, in fact, the guidance usually goes out the end of this month and they, they have to get their budget to me by the, usually, sometime in July, the end of July usually. So it's not a whole lot of time. I mean, obviously, you've got a few more meetings, you could decide what you want to do if you want to make a change. I don't think you need to decide tonight. But at some point here, you know, we'll be delaying the decision to issue guidance out to departments so they can put that together. We do need, obviously, some time to do that.
Understood. And I, I, so I kind of, I agree with both sides, both sides of this discussion. I think that we're in a tough position from a city perspective to be asking people for an increase, given that, um, things will probably get a lot tougher before they get a lot better. But at the same time, we just don't have the data yet to know, um, what the, the picture fully looks like for the next tax bill. I mean, it's something similar that we're dealing with, you know, with the trauma society about, um, you know, we're, we're watching the dues as they come in and every month we think it's going to change. And so now we're projecting out three months for a reason. So I don't know what the answer to this is. I think it's a worthwhile discussion, but I also don't want to get us so far down the road with city staff, then have to take a left-hand turn. It doesn't, doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right. So I don't know. I think we need the additional data point, but I do agree with Councilor Hill that this is not going to be, you know, three percent isn't going to be a slam dunk this year.
So we have intersecting dates here, right? That's the problem is I don't think we're going to have a valid data point until July first. And, you know, we want to reach out in that same timeframe, um, to give guidance to the department heads. So kind of damned if we do and damned if we don't. And I don't frankly, tonight, have a good answer to that. Um, perhaps we need to dwell on a little bit and within the next council meeting or two, come to some, um, agreement on what we want to do. Yes, Councilor Bealow?
Well, the other thing to do is just think in terms of austerity alternatives. Um, you know, it's, it's sort of like here's, you probably have three budgets. One, people, what they'd really like. Second, what's sort of realistic and close to the traditional parameters? And then what, what, what do we need to do if we have to take more extreme austerity measures because people just can't afford it? We've just got too much economic difficulty. So.
Well, I think the first one, I think the first one you mentioned is pretty well gone. Not even going to exist. So it's going to be, you know, if it's going to be an alternative, it's going to be the two and a half percent goal versus something less.
Yeah.
Like zero. Yes, Councilor Prentice?
No, I, I, so I, I think, um, I think we have a little bit of time, just a little bit of time to dwell on this. I'm not prepared to make a decision, obviously, tonight. I just, there are two. Intersecting dates is the best way of putting it, Mayor. And, um, I think we're just going to have to sit on this for another week or two. But we, we, we're going to have to revisit it any way you cut it, in my opinion.
So we can revisit it on the twentieth, or we can revisit it the first meeting in June. So we can revisit it on the 20th, or we can revisit it the first meeting in June. But it sounds like to be, to give folks the amount of time they need, we probably don't need, want to go much beyond June, even though we're not going to have that data point.
Yeah, I still wish we would. I will leave it up to you and to the Assistant Mayor to make that decision.
A word in there, Tim?
Yeah, no, right after Council Broner, he had his hand up. Council Broner.
Is June going to be too late?
No, it won't be too late, I just don't, I don't know what we'll know in June that we don't know. No, we'll have better motor vehicle data, I guess we'll have the month of May.
I think we're going to have to act without the data point.
Right, well, we've obviously run some numbers here based upon the comments that were made the last week, so we've already done some of that work, and I would think you'd want some scenarios, just some thumbnail scenarios, what that looks like. What is 0%?
I would like a ballpark picture of what it would look like.
Okay, so I can do that right now. So right now, we did, now, the other thing I have to remember, because of the revow, so when we say the tax, we don't want the tax rate to go up, the tax rate most likely is going to go down and go down considerably, that's because of the revaluation, the changes to play in, so I talked about that before. So it's really not the tax rate, it's really what people are paying, right? Even though the tax rate's going to go down, and it may go down significantly, they're still going to pay the same taxes they paid before. So we just got to just remember that, it's a fine difference, but it's a very significant difference by the end of the day. So there's that one piece. So what we did is, we looked at what 0% is, and we took in to consideration, and Vicki, you've got to pull up, take a look at those, and you can just jump into, I'm missing any pieces on that. We said, look, we have some built-in, we have CBAs in there with built-in costs, the, at a minimum, we have to pay a 1.5% GWI in '21, because that's the last year of all the contracts. And then, of course, we have the step increases also in '21, so those are already built in by contract, we have to pay those. And we put in a 10% increase in health insurance, that's just a guess as to what it might be. It came in less last year, well, for this, for this budget year, it actually came in at 8%. But we were planning for 10% and took, rattled off some of the other ones that.
The Henshaw retirement system.
The Henshaw retirement system, right? We don't know what's going to happen with that. They're obviously, they're, right now, it looked initially like they were losing a lot on investments, but that seems to be rebounding, who knows what's going to happen with that, whether or not we see an increase in that when it's set again, because there was a reduction this particular year, so that's an unknown. Some of the other, there's some one-time items that came out. We have an ERP program we have to replace, because ours is at the end of life, that's our financial software package, so that was counted for.
So those are essentially non-discretionary expenses.
Right, and this is a turnaround down for you. So it's $625,000, so and everything else is level funding, right? $675,000, so we would have to cut $675,000 out of that. So I've already stopped pretty much most of the training in the city, I can't continue to do that, we're going to have to do some training next year, so I can't go and cut that again, that would not be wise. So I'd have to go find $675,000 in the budget to do that, to make it level funding in the 21 budget. And that assumes nothing else pops up that has an increase that we can't control. And the only way I could really do that, I could say, well, we're not going to do any street paving next year in '21, which I don't think would be a good idea, we're way behind on that. And then other than that, it's laying people off.
So the $675 in discretionary expenses essentially comes from laying people off?
Yeah, I mean, I spent detailed time to go through them, but I think that's probably what most of it's going to be.
Right.
Unless you said we're not going to do any paving, which I don't think we really, I don't think we can afford, I don't do any of that. The other part would be, capital projects won't matter, because those are, you know, that's not going to hit for another year after that.
Right.
So that's, that's probably what would happen, is I'd have to make layoffs, and I don't know what they would be. You can't lay off police and fire next year, because you're in the last year of the runout of the cops and the safer ramp. So it would have to be elsewhere in the city.
And it's not, I mean, you know, you could script things like recreational programs to the bone, it's not going to bring you close to the $675.
Yeah, a lot of those, they pay for themselves, like the fees that come in, so that's not a one-for-one. I'd have to, I'd have to take something that doesn't bring in a revenue on the other side to actually make that reel. The other option, of course, would be to take that assigned fund balance, which I think is a really bad idea, to soften that out. I don't recommend doing that, because we may have to do that if we have holes in the budget.
So how much additional work, and it sounds like you've done a lot of it already, but how much additional work would there be to direct the department heads to level funding?
Well, that would be easy, obviously, because those lines will change.
Right.
But there's probably going to be some that are going to go up and down, that I'm not thinking, but I'd have to make up for that somewhere else.
Exactly, so it's, yeah, it's not like you're going to say every department level funds, you want a level fund across the budget, and some are going to go up or down more than others. But I'm thinking, if that sort of direction went out, that's the kind of money we're looking at, is $675,000.
Right, that's the simple answer to that question.
Yep.
The problem with that is, remember, the plan was to have enough tax revenue coming in so we can pay that debt service in the subsequent years. We won't be able to do that now. So that means an additional 588, I think it's 588, is it Vicki? $588,000 in 2022, on top of that, that you have to take off with no growth in the budget. So it compounds itself, otherwise you won't have enough to meet the debt payments that are in the general fund. And you wouldn't be able to add any more capital projects in the general fund either, because obviously that's going to grow from the charts you saw before. So it has a compounding impact if we do that. I mean, the reason for the tax rate increase was to smooth out the debt service piece, it wasn't so much for the increase in the operating budget. So we'd have to make up for that, but again, you'd have to do that year after year after year now, otherwise you'd have a spike in the tax rate. When you decided not to be able to continue to make those cuts. So 2023 or whatever, you'd have to make either very, very deep cuts or a spike in the tax rate. It would be unavoidable.
Council Heist, thanks for your patience.
Well, I want to thank Sean for enlightening us on a whole lot of the ins and outs, which we haven't got the information to deal with or to be able to put perspective on. But I'm saying that we're in uncharted waters, and it's the whole nation. But I think the Lebanon went through this back in the 50s, when the mills went out, and nobody knew where they were going to get their tax money from, and all you heard around town was, I can't sell my house. We don't want to end up, and we're not going to end up in that position again, I hope. But whatever, Sean, you could bring to us for information on what, as, what you just laid out was excellent in my book, that that's the kind of information that we need to try to discuss in the future. So thank you for already having it, and we'll move forward.
So I guess my suggestion, based on what I've heard, is let's, let's discuss this at our first meeting in June and try to come to some conclusion for a recommendation based on what we've heard tonight. I don't think we're going to have any real new data in the next couple of weeks, but at least it'll give us a chance to all mull this a little bit more, now that we know sort of what the ramifications are, at least for the 21 tax bills.
Well, what I can do is, I can do it at 1% increase in tax rate, 2, 3, 2.5, whatever you want me to do, I can just, we can just run some thumbnail numbers, just to kind of give you a better idea.
All I would say, let's, here's my recommendation, councilors. Let's do it at a flat rate, you have no increase. We know what it is at 2.5, roughly.
No, no, that was at a flat rate, the number it escaped was at a flat rate.
Yes, it's $675.
Right.
Right. But if we knew with a little more detail, from what you've just said to us, what that really means, you've thrown out a few things, if we could flesh that out a little bit.
Yeah.
And then do a midpoint, right? So whatever, 1.25 or something.
It's an extra bridge, I can do a 1, 1.5.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, whatever you, we'll give you a recommendation. We'll give you a recommendation, well, I'll try to give you the best I can, what idea, what I, what I think I might cut.
Right. And we're not trying to alarm anybody, we're not trying to alarm employees or anything like that, but I think we need to at least have the data to make an educated decision, because we're certainly going to get asked. Now, I'm presuming that this all assumes that this is just the general tax rate, and we're not looking at water, sewer, cutting those increases that we have built in.
I don't know if you are or not, because you said that earlier, right?
Right.
The 8, 7.3, those are projected, and you see the need for that in there, so you are going to have to decide what you're going to do if you're going to maintain that schedule. And if you're not, just, now you get some idea of what you're trying to do, because we can tell you what the impact of that will be.
Let's tack, let's tackle the general tax rate first.
Yeah.
And then, if we feel that we need to take a look at water and sewer rates, we can do that too. And we certainly get, I don't know about the rest of you, I get as many comments on water and sewer rates and maybe more than I do on property tax rates.
That's right.
Yeah.
So let's take a look at the tax rate first.
Yeah. I'll map it out at 0, we'll do it at 1, 1.5, 2, 2.5, and then 3, and then we'll show you the compounding impacts of that over time. And I'll try to, as best I can, get some rough idea of what that will mean in terms of cuts and service reductions.
Okay. Does that sound good, everyone?
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
But we'll try to get it to you well before the June meeting, you know, we should probably go and get that stuff crunched, and it'll take me more than a week to do that.
You know, maybe not by the 20th.
Well, we'll get it out to you.
If we had something prior to the June meeting.
Yeah.
So we could have a few days to mull it over, that would be helpful. Okay. Well, that answered our agenda for tonight. Council Prentice has had to sign off, so she's no longer with us. Unless there's any other questions or comments, I've entertained a motion. Council Broner.
We adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Hey.
Council Heist, seconds. Motion to make, second to adjourn. Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Sykes.
Votes aye.
Council Broner.
Yes.
Council Heist.
Votes aye.
Council Zook.
Yes.
Council Hill.
Yes.
Council Bealow.
Bealow votes yes.
And Dave McMurdo votes yes, we adjourned. Thank you, folks, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.